Good evening. The date is February 6, 2024. The time is approximately 7:08, and I would like to call the Frederick County School Board Meeting to Order. We have an agenda before us. Do I have a motion for approval?
Motion approved the agenda as presented.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. If you would, please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you for that. Now, if you would all please rise and, as we repeat, pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to open our public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 25 budget. Excuse me. The school board is pleased to provide citizens an opportunity to speak specifically about the proposed FY 25 budget. Everyone who would like to speak about other matters will be given an opportunity during the citizen comment period, which we will have after this public hearing is closed. Individuals seeking to speak during this public hearing to the board will be allotted three minutes, and those individuals representing groups or organizations will be allotted five minutes with one representative per group. Once at the podium, individuals should clearly state their name and residing district. All comments are to be addressed to the chair. The board will receive comments but will not respond to questions or engage in dialogue. This is an opportunity to be heard, and the board will refer any issues or concerns to staff or appropriate committees. The school board is committed to showing appropriate respect and courtesy to all citizens, and speakers are expected to show appropriate respect and courtesy to the board. Members of the audience are not permitted to interrupt the speaker or meeting by asking questions or making comments. School board meetings are taped, recorded for the purpose of clarification and development of the official minutes. And after we have the comments on the budget, we'll open it up for general comments, so the same rules will apply to that section as well. And right now, we have one person signed up to speak.
My name is Angie White, and I live in the Gainesboro District. Good evening, Dr. Hummer, members of the board. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Preschool Advisory Committee, which is a group of educators, administrators, parents, and community members who are committed to high-quality pre-K programs in our school division. This is our seventh year of having the preschool initiative program in our schools. We began our VPI program with three classrooms, serving 54 children identified at risk through a determination of factors, the highest being family income. In those seven years, we have increased our program to four classrooms. We have continually kept a waitlist of eligible families. Since several of you are new to our school board, we wanted to inform you of the need for more pre-K classrooms in our school division. Each year, the Virginia Department of Education allot school divisions with a number of slots to serve four-year-old children. They offer funding for 50% of the cost. In this school year, 270 slots were available, and we're serving 72 children. For the 2024 school year, this number has increased to over 300 children. That does not take into account the children served in the regional Head Start program, which is federally funded, and they are not part of our school program. They likewise have a waitlist. There is a need for preschool programs in our area for all families. This year, we had almost a third of our kindergarten children come to school with no preschool experience. We, as a school division and as a Commonwealth, want our children to start kindergarten school-ready. This does not mean already knowing their numbers and letters. It means they know how to self-regulate their emotions, know how to get along with others, and, yes, even be potty-trained. Pre-K experience helps with all of these things. Every year, we have families call my office wanting to register their children for preschool. It is heartbreaking to tell a mom who lives in possibly the Bass Hoover area that we do not serve children who live there, or to have to tell a parent from Stonewall or Red Bud Run or one of the other six schools that we serve that we can only add them to our waitlist. To conclude, please remember that all of our qualifying families deserve to have their children start school-ready to learn. That happens with a high-quality pre-K program. For many more children, please consider funding at least one more classroom for 18 children so they have the opportunity to learn how to be successful in school. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. No one else has signed up to speak concerning the budget. Is there anyone who didn't sign up who would like to speak?
Hello, my name is Rochelle Newlin, and I live in the Back Creek District. And my son no longer attends Frederick County, but I'm also a Frederick County alumni, graduated from James Wood. I won't tell you how long ago. So I wasn't going to talk until this nice lady brought up the VPI program. And I am appalled that my county that I live in, and I am an early child educator, only has room for four classes for VPI when we have a waitlist and we have schools that obviously aren't being even looked at. The brain development, as you all should probably know, is the biggest from birth to age eight. That's when they have the biggest growth spurt. And at age eight, they start pruning what they don't know. We can't allow them to prune things that they don't even have. They go to special ed. I'm sure she has children who go through the special ed process, who are found early enough that by grade two, they're out of special ed, or they need less services and only resource. That's saving you money. For a good, quality, early childhood program, you save $8 down the road. You have less children incarcerated, less children who are getting SNAP benefits, less children who are getting TANF. You have more that stay married. You have more that go to college. With all of these benefits, why is this county not providing services for these children? I don't understand. We provide services for many things, but why are we neglecting the most vulnerable students that we have, and that is our pre-K students? And a lot of them do. I work in Loudoun County in the Head Start program, and I have kids who come to me who aren't potty-trained. I don't think you want to send a five-year-old to your kindergarten program who does not know how to use the bathroom. I don't think you want to ask your educators to do that, but we're willing to do that. And we work with the families. I'm sure she works with the families and getting the families to understand how important it is. But they're not going to learn if this board doesn't address it first. They're not going to take their children's education seriously. So that's what I'm asking you. And I've got 41 seconds left, so I'd like to say, I would like Shorando's expansion to come off of the fiscal year 32 and to be moved up. There's 16 modulators at Shorando. I'm sorry, my son went there. There was like 12. So now there's even more. And I think for a student to be asked to go out in all weathers, to go out to a modular when we are asking for another middle school and another elementary school first, and if I'm not mistaken, Shorando is 24.7% over, 326 students extra. So are you going to put them in two more modulators next year? So I'm just asking you to relook at of those thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wanted to speak on the budget this evening? All right, moving on then. We will open the floor up to generalized citizen comments. We have one person signed to speak, Shane Bowen.
Hello, Chair. Mr. Sturdevent, thank you for being here tonight. I am an alumni from James Wood High School. My wife went to James Wood High School, and I have four children that have went into your schools. I'm here for the youngest of the four, the most neediest. Mr. Sturdevent, I thank all Frederick County school employees for their unwavering dedication to our children. I am here tonight to seek confirmation of my son William Jackson Bowen's FERPA request for his education records. Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Contact information, Mr. Bowen, 283 Amaro Lane, Core, Virginia, 22637. Email address, spbowen76@gmail.com. I have emailed you. I have sent you a certified letter. Thank you, Mr. Sturdevent. I'll be awaiting your comments.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who has not signed up that would like to speak to generalized information? We'll close the citizen comments portion of this. Next is unfinished business. Our first item is the second reading of Bylaw 115P by Dr. Hummer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So this came to you all as a first reading a couple weeks ago at our January board meeting. As I mentioned to you all, and as you can see, the two changes to this policy was to add some additional information items to our order of our meeting, and there was some changes there as well as adding announcements. So at the end of every meeting, we can announce when our next meetings are, as well if there's other things coming up. I think that would be very good for us to reiterate that with the public. And then there was also an item at the end where I worked with Mrs. Jordan to add some additional items on there for some consistency in regards to rule of order for our meetings. And of course, if there's anything that's not covered on there, we will cover that through the Roberts Rule of Order, where Mrs. Jordan and myself will help guide us along with those topics. So those are the two changes there. This does require two readings, Mr. Chair, because this is a bylaw. So the first reading was back in January. This is the second. So if there's no other questions, the proposal is to approve.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I move that the board adopt the proposed amendments to Bylaw 115P, Order of Business, Quorum, Rules, and as presented.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the bylaws.
Second.
Duly seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is new business. Finance Committee meeting minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, I'd like to give my finance committee report from January 25 of 2024. The finance committee met in the Dr. Melton F. Wright Board Meeting Room at the Frederick County Public Schools Administration Building on January 25, 2024. The meeting was called to order at 4:31 PM, and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Ms. Camery reviewed the finance committee meeting topics and timelines through February and gave a finance committee meeting overview. She also defined the differences between division average, scale average, and all employees regarding the salary initiative. She also reviewed the term step movement in regards to employees moving from one pay level to the next. Mrs. Camery shared Dr. Hummer's five-year salary strategies, which includes removing years of experience clusters on all pay scales, providing pay scales that max at 30 years' experience, offering a competitive starting salaries, giving experienced staff a competitive increase, and providing a cost-of-living adjustment COLA each year. Mrs. Camery reviewed the fiscal year 2023 and 2024 teacher salaries for the Frederick County Public Schools compared to an average in the 30 Mile survey group, which is comprised of the counties of Clark, Warren, Shenandoah, Page, Loudoun, and Falkir, and the city of Winchester. She also shared the cost of the salary initiatives for teachers, classifieds, other professionals, as well as administrators, supervisors, and coordinators. Mrs. Camery also discussed other salary initiatives, such as giving an additional $5,000 bonus for teachers with 25 years of experience, and a $2,000 bonus for hard-to-fill positions, increasing the daily substitute rate by $20, and increasing the bus driver perfect attendance bonus. She also shared that Governor Yonkin included a 1% one-time bonus in his proposed budget to be paid during fiscal year 25. Mrs. Anderson reviewed the fiscal year 2025 superintendent's budget proposal for the school operating fund. She also reviewed draft scenarios of the teacher pay scales for the current year and compared it to the next year at a possible 6.6% increase, a 4.9% increase, and a 3.2% increase. She explained that these increases are dependent on funding. Mrs. Anderson shared classified position pay scale scenarios at the current scales compared to a possible 6.6% increase, as well as professional position pay scale scenarios at an increase of 5% in supervisors, coordinators, and administrator pay scales averages at an increase of 3.2%. Dr. Hummer shared that a snapshot of the budget can be found on the Frederick County Public Schools website and in the Frederick County Public Schools newsletter. The meeting adjourned at 5:20 PM. Additional details regarding the information covered at the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. Are there any questions from board members about information shared at the finance committee meeting held on January 25? Out of this meeting is one action item, and I recommend the full board approve the minutes from the finance committee meeting held on January 25, 2024.
Second.
Okay, the motions. Is there a second? Oh, I got it. Motion's been made, properly seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Second thing on new business is the amendment to the school calendar. Dr. Hummer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. We were notified that there are going to be an election. This is going to be the primary elections, the presidential elections, on March 5. We were notified that, and Mr. Goodwin, correct me if I'm wrong, 19 of our 21 buildings are going to be utilized. Is that correct?
That is correct. Every building except for Frederick County Middle School and James Wood Middle School.
So as a result, we definitely do not want school in session during that time with the election, so we are recommending to the board to amend the calendar to be off for all staff and students on that day.
Do I have a motion to amend the calendar for the school and administrative offices to be closed on March 5 for the primary election?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Atkins.
I move that the board amend the school calendar to include the closing of all schools' administration offices on March 5, 2024, for the primary election.
All right, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, no new business. Other new business at this time, we are now at the point in our agenda for a closed session. Do I have a motion to enter into closed session?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Then we shall adjourn for closed session.
Just one moment, Mr. Chair. If I may read the--
Well, I apologize. Yes, ma'am.
This is the proper legalese here. So we do have a motion for close to enter closed session. I move that the county school board of Frederick County, Virginia, enter a closed session meeting for the following: to review and discuss administrative appointments pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711, Paragraph A dot 1.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're going for closed session. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, I move that we reconvene from closed session.
Second.
I have a motion, and it has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have returned from closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that, to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were disclosed, correction, discussed, in the closed session, and only such public business matters were identified in the motion by which the closed session was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered by the board.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify. Second.
Madam Clerk for the certification.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Funas?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Aye.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdevent?
All right.
Now?
All right, now it's been--
So now goes to Madam Chair to read the motion.
And, Mr. Chair, we have one motion coming out of closed session. I move to approve the personnel actions as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
We have a motion, and it has been properly seconded. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And we'll turn it over to Dr. Hummer for those positions.
All right, thank you, Madam Vice Chair. So I would like to first call up Mrs. Stephanie Reed. Please join me in welcoming our new principal of Red Bud Run Elementary School. Mrs. Reed has served as the assistant principal at Red Bud Run Elementary since 2016. She steps into the role as principal of Rocky-- excuse me, of Red Bud Run Elementary School, bringing 26 years of experience in elementary education. Mrs. Reed has a bachelor's in elementary education from Clarion University of Pennsylvania, a master's in elementary education from Old Dominion University, and a postmaster's certificate in educational leadership and administration from the George Washington University. Congratulations again, and let's give her another round of applause.
I just want to take a second to thank everybody, the board, Dr. Hummer, Dr. Angelo, Mr. Goodwin. I'm super excited about this opportunity. Like you said, I've been at Red Bud for now, this is my seventh year. So I've built great relationships with families and students and teachers, and so I just look forward to continuing that in a different role. So thank you for the opportunity.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. Thank you. Next up is Mrs. Allison Post. Please come forward as our new supervisor of career and technical education. Let's give her a round of applause. She steps into the role of supervisor of career and technical education after having been the work-based learning coordinator for Frederick County Public Schools since July 2022. She was formerly a career coach at Millbrook High School for two years and a business teacher at Frederick County Middle School for seven years. Additionally, she brings several years of business-related experience from the private sector. Mrs. Post holds a bachelor's of arts in communications from American University and a master's of arts from the West Virginia University. So all of our universities have to have the "in front of it," apparently. Congratulations, and let's give her another round of applause.
I just want to say thank you to the board. Thank you, Dr. Hummer. I know some of you on the board, I've been up here probably more than you'd like to see me, talking about career and technical education, but I look forward to working with you and just continuing the great foundation that we have with our CTE courses, our programs, and just enjoy working with you. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, now, next up is board member comments. Correct? Are there any comments from the board members?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Atkins.
I'd like to address some of the comments that were made earlier for the citizen comments during our public hearing and discussing the modulators as well. First, the pre-K. Totally agree with the comments made. You know, those young children's mind is kind of like, they say, like a bowl of Jell-O, you got to put all the fruit in before it sets. You know, so I do agree with that, you know, and I know that the superintendent has talked to board members in the past and current board members about trying to get an actual facility to have a pre-K in there instead of just kind of farming it out to every other school. So there is a plan in place. So we are kind of working on that, but as we know, budgets dictate kind of where everything goes, and hopefully, we can get this figured out sooner than later. Next is the modulators. I definitely hear you over at Shorando. Shorando's over, you know, a lot of kids in my district go to Shorando, and nobody wants to be learning or teaching out of those modulators. Hopefully, though, with the superintendent's proposed budget and looking ahead, you know, we're not just looking at five years, we're looking at 10, 20 years down the road. We're trying to have that good look ahead. So with that, hopefully, that fourth high school that everybody keeps talking about does alleviate some of that stress, and we can get rid of those modulators, and then hopefully add on or expand. But the problem with just expanding onto Millbrook, like we've talked, or I'm sorry, Shorando and Millbrook and the other high schools is, you know, hallway sizes, cafeteria sizes, and that's something that's going to be more than just adding on bricks and mortar to a school. You know, we do need that fourth high school so we can give these kids a proper education. Lastly, I do want to congratulate our new appointees and the rules. You know, I've heard nothing but great things about Ms. Reed out there at Red Bud-- or Red-- you got me messed up now. Red Bud Run. Say that three times fast. But yeah, so, and the staff out there, you know, is just elated to have you out there. Ms. Post, we see you all the time, like you said in your speech, but everything you bring up to us is well-received, and, you know, you always come with all the information fully intact. Any questions we have, you're right there to answer any of them, but we have a few questions for you because you do come with a plethora of information. So I appreciate that. Thank you to our new appointees, and, you know, if you guys need any help with anything, please reach out. Cheers.
Are there any other board members?
Mr. Chairman, I just had a question actually for Dr. Hummer, if I may. The March 5 school closure date, when will that information go out to the families and to the public?
Today.
Excellent.
We'll work with our communications director to get that information out. Yes, sir.
Because I know, as also a father and family in Frederick County, generally, we need to be hit over the head with bats before we get it. And so hopefully, we can get it more than one time, and I just wanted to make sure that that was something that we expressed to everybody.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may. So anytime we have information that needs to get out to our schools, we send it out through multiple modalities. So first, we send emails to all of our administrators to let them know of any sort of administrative appointments, significant amendments, or significant approvals by the school board that they need to be made aware of, we send that out. Then we also send out a press release. So we will send a press release out to Winchester Star to make sure that all this information goes out to them as well. We also add this information to our website. We'll also send out emails to Rapid Communication. We also send it out through all of our social media hubs. So you see the theme, so we definitely send that out regularly. We'll definitely add it to the banner as well. So if you come up to the Frederick County website, it'll say, "March 5 is now a day off." And then, of course, as you mentioned, Mr. Bell, we'll continue to remind our families as we get closer to that date as well, so--
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other board member comments?
Mr. Chair.
Congratulations to Ms. Post and Ms. Reed. We're very excited to see you in these positions. We hear great things about you, Ms. Reed, and it's nice to have that-- the word is leaving me-- continuation. And while these two positions had people that were very well-regarded, I know that you guys are going to push that forward even more. Ms. Post, you always bring so much energy to everything that you do, and it's always a pleasure to work with you. So congratulations. And to Ms. White, who spoke on behalf of the pre-kindergarten-- And to Ms. White, who spoke on behalf of the pre-kindergarten, I share the same opinion as Mr. Atkins in wanting to work hard to deliver that to our constituents and our citizens. I think that it's so important. I've experienced it with my own child being in a pre-K setting since they were very young, and I, the knowledge explosion that they have is, the benefit is undeniable, and the mention of it helps keep people out of situations they might otherwise have been in had they not had this opportunity is just, it's not even a bang for our buck. It's just, it's a return on investment, and we are a county of halves, and we can and we should invest in our children and our families. So I will be advocating for that, as I have the last couple of years. I know that we have some obstacles, but I believe we can.
Any other comments? And if there are no other comments, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a seconded?
Second.
Motion's been made, properly seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? We are adjourned.